I hereby call the meeting of the State Board of Education together. It's 1:07. And Mertz, if you'd do a roll call.
Yes, we'll start on my left with Mike Flanagan. He's the State Superintendent and Chairman of the Board. And as we go around the table, we have Gary Ray from Ray &amp; Associates and Tim Quinn, who's in partnership with Ray &amp; Associates for this project. And then Heather Callahan, you know her from Department of Technology Management and Budget, which is the State Procurement Office. Across the table, you've got Eileen Weiser. She's a board member from Ann Arbor. John Austin, Board President, he's from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss, she's a board member from Detroit. Michelle Fecto's the NASB National Delegate, and she's from Detroit. And on the phone, we've got Cassandra Ulbrich, Vice President. Lupe Ramos Montini, oh, Cassandra is from Rochester Hills. Lupe Ramos Montini is from Grand Rapids. And Dan Varner, if he's not there, will be joining any minute. He's the Board Secretary. He's from Detroit. Dan, are you there? Okay.
And then next official thing would just be approval of agenda and order of priority. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
By John, supported by Eileen, I think it was. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Great, now you can just go for it.
Well, thank you, and thanks, everybody, for participating. And thank you, Gary Ray, and Tim Quinn, for being here, and Heather and her colleague, Jeff, for helping orchestrate this engagement. And I was telling Tim and Gary before the meeting, I think everybody here is eager to fine tune the work program and have something we can enter into a contract with, eager to do that. I think that's what we mainly need to discuss today. There's some potential fine tuning of a proposed work program based on a few pieces of work that we've done. Perhaps we can skip over and advance to articulating who we're looking for. But also, some particular guidance from the AG's office about how we march through this process in a way that is respectful, appropriately so, of the Open Meetings Act, and how we particularly articulate to candidates how they will be treated through this process in terms of their, some desire to stay confidential, how and when we can move the process to sort and process and winnow the field, and under what conditions as a full board we do that. And I know, Heather, you're going to help us make sure we get what we need to have a contract agreement that can be entered into, right? And there's, I was telling Heather, some of the language, if it includes work program elements, we need to make sure are appropriately conforming to open meetings' expectations. So that will be important as we fine tune the work program. So I don't know what's most productive. If we could, I could go through the work program and share some of the AG's issues as well, or we could have you guys just sort of open up with a general articulation of what you're proposing to do. I'm not sure which is most effective, or fruitful, or time efficient.
Well, you might want to just run through the work program rather quickly, you know, and that, and...
Do all board members have the proposal, which includes, if I'm correct, the work program is really page five and six? We do have copies, so why don't we get that in front of us? Is that correct?
That's great.
That...
Yeah, thank you.
There's a series of activities and steps that were proposed as a work program that are five and six, which might be the meat of the sort of fine tuning. Because I think, hopefully, we'll get what we need to agree on a contract. And only if we're swapping out significant time and money activities that have implications for a contract, and I'm not worried, none of us are worried about the overall cost at this point, but if we drop out some activities and it could affect the bottom line, it would be good to save the taxpayers some money. But I'm not necessarily assuming that that's what happens. But we do kind of need to agree on that today. So, again, I apologize for moving briskly through this discussion, but I appreciate all the board members' interest in being here. But we have a time constraint at the backside, and we want to try to make sure we get what we need to do, done. So, again, from my perspective, in broad strokes, looking at the work program, again, some items, and I believe it's shared by other board members, some items that include number two, where we, as a board, have come together and really worked together to articulate our priorities, goals, and objectives in developing the criteria and qualifications. And number seven, collecting input from outside stakeholders was also part of our process predating this. And also...
Part of your job description that you put together.
Right, and part of our inputting into our job description included those activities. Let me, otherwise, you know, the types of activities on the, substantively makes sense. However, let me narrate as best I can, the, our Attorney General's advisor on this, Michelle Brea. We spent some long time and even went over the work plan together, and she pointed out a number of issues and things we need to pay attention to as we move through this. And she wouldn't, she should not be here because, to give her advice as our attorney, we'd have to go into closed session in confidence. So she gave it to me, and I'm trying to bring it forward to inform this discussion.
Sure.
So, the major issues are, we do, certainly, and we can, as we put out a solicitation and invite candidates, ask them if they want to remain confidential. And as then, the search helpers go out and actively recruit candidates and are advanced applications, which I think we do all want to have a, you know, a good aggressive outreach strategy, which I know is part of what you proposed. At some point, and at some point in the articulation of this, there would be a time at which the search firm would be bringing forward to the full board all the candidates who applied. With, it is appropriate for them to make recommendations. We think this pile are extremely well qualified. We think this pile is qualified. We think these are not meeting your qualifications. But we have to vet those, they can't screen on our behalf, so we have to bring those into a full board meeting. Now, we can treat those who are asking to be kept in confidence, in confidence, in that process, in a full board meeting. We'd go into closed session to discuss candidates who wanted to be kept in confidence, and to evaluate them and talk about them. We would bring them into a public discussion with a number attached to them. So, for example, we might have hypothetically fifteen candidates who are public, fifteen or twenty who are private. We have a, you're making some assessments, recommendations. You're bringing all of that pile to a meeting at which we then are winnowing the field in some way. We have to treat the public candidates in public. We have to talk about them in public. We have to talk about, we can talk about the private candidates in private. But then in public, we have to say, we want to advance to a sort of more serious consideration, semifinalist or finalist pool, numbers four, nine, and seventeen, who are in confidence, and numbers eight, ten, five, or eight, that are, the ones that are public. I think the implications of that include, it's all, it is impossible, so we have to, and we would then, after that process, be able to appropriately go to the candidates who want to be kept in confidence and say, or you could say, on our behalf, you're now under some sort of either semifinalist or serious or finalist consideration. Are you still interested in pursuing this? And if they are, then they have to, they would go public. What it does, I think, is it makes it, it is not possible to do the, the search firm to interview candidates in any way, shape, or form on our behalf, because that's such a clear, so this semifinalist screening by video is not going to be permissible. And any interviewing whatsoever has to be done by the full board. So, I think, I think the implications, and you all cannot ever sort of vet or winnow the field on our behalf, though you can make recommendations on same. And so that we can always reserve the right, let's say we have thirty candidates, you're saying, I think fifteen are just totally unqualified. We have to be able to look at that pile and say, no, you know, I think, I think my uncle is qualified. So, we have to reserve the right to do that and do it in public. So that's how that, so, I think those are the major things. There were also a few minor points on some of the particular work program elements. But so, how we articulate a process and a timeline for it, and how we winnow the field with your recommendations, and do that dance in the appropriate way, has some implications, I think, for the work program.
Well, I'll have to do is make those adjustments, and we can make those adjustments. Wouldn't be the first time that I've had to make some adjustments, having done a lot of state commissioners or states who pretend, you know, jobs, all the way from Florida around the country. So, they're a little bit different.
Talk a little louder, I don't think the people of a phone can hear you.
What's that?
She wants you to speak.
Oh, okay. I didn't want them to hear me, so. No, what we can do is make those adjustments in, you know, in our agreement to, and we'll certainly work with your legal staff to make sure that the correct wording is there and that we understand how we need to operate. So, we certainly can do that. And one of the things we want to talk a little bit is about your timeline. I prepared some topics for discussion, which we, I think we can get through within our time limit, that would be helpful, I think, from our standpoint, you know, to get this thing moving. Because that's one of the things we would like to do, is get things moving as quickly as possible, so that we, there's already, the word is out there somewhat that we have the position, but we certainly don't have anything to tell anybody until this meeting. So, would it be all right if I just kind of talked about these topics?
Sure.
And I don't want to, is there any, you know...
No, I think it's, we all are interested in getting the work plan articulated...
Right.
...in the appropriate way, so that we have the ability, or the state has the ability to enter into a contract.
Right.
So we need to make sure we're getting that in front of us. And then anticipate or figure out what is the next step that we can take together, assuming we get that contract in place.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
I have a few more that you can give us, if someone... That was the first question here about the search process. And we've kind of talked a little bit about it, how it's going to work, open, private, or a combination. So I like to make it's a little bit of a combination that we'd have to kind of work through. So, you know, that, that part of it's always important to us, because when we're talking to candidates, they're going to want to know about the confidentiality and how the process works.
And you should expect, John, the vast majority of people are going to request confidentiality, right? Unless they're publicly campaigned.
We have a few campaigners.
Yeah. I understand. I've heard from them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We always get, we always have those.
Campaign managers have called.
And I think part of what we, at least I, and I've encouraged a few of my colleagues want to help reinforce, is we want to attract a good number of really top-notch people who fit the terms of what we're asking for. And if you campaign or don't campaign, it doesn't matter. You're going to be encouraged and taken as seriously if you're confidential as you are if you're campaigning, so.
Let us talk a little bit about the timeline. You know, obviously, we submitted a timeline, or, and you have one here, and we're running a little bit different, you know, maybe on the dates. And we can back end those dates. Are you looking to have a, an announcement of the candidate sometime here, still in March?
I think April is probably the more realistic and appropriate target. We'd like to pick somebody in April, I think, at this juncture.
Okay.
Okay.
We can.
So, kind of use...
No, none of, that document was, yeah, always viewed as a guide. So, but we, you know, as you see, we've seen, we've been trying our best to meet our target. And here we are.
Yeah, you're not too far off on it. And actually, toward the end of March or something, and I'll have to maybe try to work with your calendar as far as your meetings and, you know, that sort of thing, so that I try to keep as few meetings as, as extra meetings as possible. So, what we could do is take a look and maybe put together a calendar for you. Would that be appropriate, that we could do that? And try to target, see, I think there's something about the end of March, Tim and I've talked about this, that end of March or first part of April would be probably okay, as far as trying to get you the best pool of candidates. If we go too late, then we're going to have some folks that will bow out, because the calendar, not because the job.
We should make...
I'm sorry, folks on the phone, please, if you, if you want to talk, just please holler, so that we can make sure we get you on.
So, we'll probably develop a fairly aggressive calendar, and probably look toward more March than it will be in April. I'm afraid, you know, if we go too far middle or late April of naming the person, then I think we'll lose some people in the pool.
Yep.
Yeah, and I wanted to kind of repeat that for the people on the phone, so.
I hear you loud and clear, and you make a lot of sense to me. This is Lupe.
Agreed. This is Dan.
Me too.
That would be, that would be great, if, so if you all could sort of back a work program based on what you've...
On this.
Against that, well, against that target, how do we meet it, including, you know, what are the, what's the timetable from here on, in terms of, it'll take us X long to kind of produce the articulation and then the window for recruiting, so that would be very helpful.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly try to, try to work with that, and along with the terminology or the contract, as we adjust, you know, the kinds of concerns that we, I know that, looking at, you know, the agenda that we have here, right, is it that right here? I always have my white copy, because my staff understands. This is my working copy. Everybody else gets a colored one. The job description, so that we understand, the job description that you've put together, this is the one that we're going to operate on, is it currently, so that we can provide the candidates this type of job description? It's been adopted, and it's, it's active?
Yes, and I think, again, I don't want, I'm trying to speak on F the Board, but everybody else, I mean, that, that sort of articulation of both the job and the qualities and experience that we're looking for was relatively carefully, and I won't say painfully, but thoughtfully, put together. So I think that, from my point of view, it's, you're now translating that articulation into whatever is the appropriate articulation to conduct the search.
Right.
And that will become the basis by which you evaluate candidates, right?
Correct, right.
Okay.
And you're helping, how do we use that...
Absolutely.
...as a tool to examine the criteria of the candidates?
Yeah, well, not all use that as to screen and vet candidates, or at least as we recruit candidates, too. We'll be able to utilize and say, this is the role's responsibility, characteristics and traits, you know, of the profile. I know that you folks, and you can tell me yes or no, or maybe on this part of it, one of the things we do like, like to do is have, have a discussion with, you know, each, each person on the board. And the reason why we do that, because that's the first question we get from candidates, tell me about the board. And so we at least like to be able to say, we had some, some kind of a discussion or conversation about, if it's just over, just more or less overview of the process and confirming the, the skills and traits and experience in all the jobs. So, either Tim or I will, will do that.
That was one of the two, two, two notes on that. One is, if that's to inform the criteria and profile age, we've already done that. But more as significantly, that's, that was one of the items in the work program that the Attorney General's Office was recommending not happen. I do not recommend that the consultant conduct interviews with the state board members to determine their priorities, goals, et cetera. If these discussions are to be had, they need to take place in the public meeting under OMA.
Really?
So, if I were just bump into them in a restaurant, and we had a, so we couldn't have any discussion? I mean, if it was not a forum? I agree, I'm just...
Her, her strong guidance was that the consultant is acting on half of the board, so the consultant can't do any side, anything outside of public meeting that the board couldn't do outside of public meeting.
Even on an individual basis, you're saying?
Well, we do, we had talked to it.
We can talk to you, I'm just, I, again, I am relaying the guidance that, I'm more concerned about the first point. I'm, I feel that we, as a board, did a lot of effort to listen to each other as we put the materials together. And so, I would be anxious about a consultant reinterpreting in one-on-one with each board member, what we're really looking for.
Yep, but even in your profile, if I could just say this, even in your profile, there is nuance.
There's what?
Can you speak up a little bit, Dan?
Speak up.
Absolutely. Even in the candidate profile that you have, as well articulated as it is, there is nuance there. And candidates are going to ask about, they're going to have questions about the profile. What do they mean by this? And since we haven't had the opportunity to be part of the process of putting that profile together, which we would ordinarily do, then...
No, I think that's, it's very important that you all understand the nuances.
Yeah.
And they all do so, but I think if we do that, we need to do it as a group, as a public meeting, to talk about what we were, because we, as we did together, when we put it together, we had a public meeting at which we talked about, so, I respecting particularly the Attorney General's recommendation, very much want you to understand what we mean by that profile.
Okay.
But we could either, so I think to, we, if we want to have a discussion, we should have that discussion as a, as a group. Or, or, I just don't, I don't see, I mean, a lot of this was to appropriately not, if your work program includes individual meetings with board members, and that could be construed, even though as healthy as that might be, as someone opening the door to sue us that we're not violating, you know, the public meetings discussion expectations, that would be unfortunate, and we want to avoid that. And that's, that's the nature of the AG's recommendation on some of these items.
I have a question. If we had, if they sent us a list of questions, and sent them to each of us individually, and then we submitted the responses, and those would be public documents, if anybody cared to look them up, could they, could they forward questions to us in writing? And that the documents would be FOIA, public documents?
That, that could be a way, that we'd have to make sure that we not only make them public, that we call people's attention to them. And I'll, we could ask the AGs for their recommendation on that type of process.
And I would also suggest that even though no one wants to add to the work scope, that we have an hour's discussion with you and go over the job description with you. Just do it in public. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't want to reiterate that. Any clarification we can give you as a group would be more productive than giving it to you as individual members, I believe.
And that may be a very quick next step, or one of the next steps for us, is to do that, and that could be done for some of you by phone. But we, as you can tell, we always have to do a lot of public things together here.
So you have a meeting on the sixteenth, right?
Right, next week, yeah.
Tuesday.
We could do it at that meeting. That doesn't have a very long agenda. Doesn't look like it, anyway. So...
We're here, and we could do it with you by Skype.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a meeting scheduled.
Well, one of us will, you know, be in contact and be in between us. I don't know if it takes two of us, but, you know, but, right now, I have, I don't know my travel, you know, schedule right now, this time of year. But, but we'll, we'll work that out. Maybe we can do that, you know, and possibly, what I can do is try to work up a timeline back in that date that we were talking about in, in March, and maybe, maybe kind of at that point in time, kind of go over that with you. What I would like for you to do is try to bring your calendars. I know calendars are a little fluid, but, but if we can kind of put a few things out there ahead of time, I think that would be good. So, why don't we, this will fit rather nicely in, in two and three, on the topics for discussion. So why don't, why don't we plan on the sixteenth, having, you know, some discussion on that and clarification, and then, well, I'll put together a draft. It will not be final, so I don't like anyone to get excited about the specific dates. Put together a draft, and if we have to move the dates around based on your calendars, then we'll do that. And I'll, I'll put, put together a draft on that, all right? That make sense?
The other thing that we could do is at least get vacation dates. Some of us have children in spring break that's coming up.
Right.
So at least the big stuff that would be a conflict, we could get that to Maryland, even today.
Yeah, that'd be great, you know, and, and if she can shoot those, we'll try to avoid those, you know, those conflicts. And I also understand things do come up, that people have other, other jobs and other, you know, obligations, but if we can get that out there, that's always helpful. And, so that, that'll take us a long ways down the road, you know, if we'll do that. So we'll plan on the sixteenth. When's that, actually, when's that meeting start?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
But the board knows, we can, they can, as late as that morning, adjust the agenda time. So, if we had a sense beforehand of when you were available, we could do that as soon as you want.
Starts at nine thirty in the morning.
Nine thirty, yeah.
It goes till usually nine or ten at night. It's...
Sometimes midnight.
Oh, I think we can get it done a little quicker than that.
So, be serious with me for a minute. Does it extend beyond your...
It's usually fourish.
Okay, right.
Three or fourish, so...
It could be, we could pick out an hour somewhere during that day.
And I don't think there's anything, unless the board remembers or Mertz, that had a time specific, so we could probably adjust around that.
We're shooting for Dan's, three thirty.
That's right, three thirty is, three thirty is kind of an end time, that meeting, because we have retiring, every retiring board member, we don't know why. Why is leaving?
We currently have a report on the State Superintendent's search, scheduled for one fifteen to two P.M.
One fifteen to two P.M.
Which, as Mike says, could be adjusted. But it's currently scheduled on the agenda for Tuesday from one fifteen to two P.M.
And we're, the board's been fluid on those exact times, even, even if it started one, one fifteen, it would go as long as the board wanted it to go with you.
Well, why don't you get those dates to us, you know, or the conflicts that they may have, and maybe check with the folks on, you know, that are not here today, and as, what's, what works best for you?
In terms of time, on the, on the sixteenth, probably early afternoon, is ideal.
Great. Thanks for them.
Mertz is good. She somehow knew that even before you knew it.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll do that, and our, our contact person, we always need a contact person, so that we're not running through three or four people. Would that be Marilyn?
Marilyn.
Okay.
Board, and I guess myself as president.
Yeah, that's who it's nor, I was going to say, that's who, who it's normally.
But the, the contract contact, you all have to be, your contract is with the state.
Contracts, our contracts here, Heather, and the day-to-day, once we get into the search, will be Marilyn, right?
Right.
Okay.
This wasn't pro bono?
Yeah, that's, that's good.
On an hourly rate, yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On, on this promotional flyer, we can, we can do a lot of that in-house. When I did draw, and what I would, what I would do, and I would like for you to see that, and maybe I can start working on that, maybe even for the sixteenth, to take some of these desirable skills and, and traits, and I like to always, the reason why I want to put something on our website, tells a little bit about the position, and in the back talks somewhat about the, some of the qualifications, the things that you're looking for. So, you know, we can, we can help create that, and I'll, I'll work with Marilyn on that, whoever we, we'll have to get in touch with, and work through that. Because I always want you to see it, because, you know, it still is, no, it's your position, and I want to make sure you're okay with what's out there. But I'll have some samples of how we're going to do that. And so I'll, I'll actually leave these with you.
Thank you.
And we don't have to do it exactly like that, but it'll give you an idea. And because candidates are going to want to see how they should apply, and what the procedure's going to be, and so we want to lay all that out there. So we'll work off the job descrip- So we'll work off the job description on that. That's okay. Now, for us, advertising is going to be something that we're going to want to get into certain professional publications. We're going to make a lot of contacts. As you know, we've been doing this for a long time, so we do have a lot of contacts. We have over 168 associates around the country, you know, that works, that work with us, so that'll help in the recruiting effort. And obviously, Tim's very familiar here with Michigan, and, and we do have associates in Michigan as well, so we'll be able to cast that net, you know, out there. But we, but we need to get in some publications. I, I try to use a lot of free publications, and our website is one of the, one of the main, you know, advertisement that we can get out there. We get, we get thousands of hits on our, on our, on our website, and so that'll be, and obviously, there's no charge for that, you know, but there are certain publications we may want to be in. And I put together a list of those, and we certainly can, you know, depending on the time, you can take a look at those. We can certainly decide on the sixteenth, you know, on that, but I thought I'd give you a list of that.
And were, were those advertisements included in your budget, the cost of those?
The, I, I believe if you look at the...
The expenses part.
The expenses part of it.
And then, Heather, do you, do you all need to approve that type of expenditure, or how does that work?
Ideally, you'll have that as part of the contract.
So they're paid, and they will pay for the advertisement? Okay.
So there's no surprises?
Yeah. That makes sense.
I'll say that again, now, our base fee is, I think, you know, that we have our base fee, and then our, like, for our expenses is going to be on top of that, so, as laid out in our proposal, so, are you looking for a dollar amount on that, or, or, first we'd have to figure out how many places we want to advertise, because that's going to make a difference on what's going to be, because otherwise, the board can say they want to advertise every place, and that's not going to work either, so. That's why I wanted to give a list out, so we could talk about that, so that's kind of important.
So Heather, bottom line is, you want a contract for some total figure?
Yeah, I think that is what the board would like as well. You would like to know how much we will spend on any resulting contract, right, upfront?
Right, and, and let's just say, right now, you have a proposed budget, which is base fee and 11, nine, and expenses. And ideally, that's, some version of that contract is what gets entered into, that we agree that that includes your advertising in these publications with an estimate of how much that will cost, right?
Right.
So that's what you'd like, Heather. You'd like a contract at some total.
I would prefer to see that.
Yeah, I, I mean, if I know exactly what kind of places where you want to advertise or will approve, I can put that, you know, you know, together. Obviously, the expenses do not, and, and that'll be separative on the candidates if you bring them in, because I have no idea how many candidates they're going to interview. I mean...
Or where they're coming from.
Where they come from. So that's, I, I wouldn't know how to do that for you. I mean, I, I could give you a rough ballpark based upon my experience, you know, what I think, you know, but I could say, okay, assuming that five candidates they might, you know, take a look at, then I could give you a rough ballpark on what I think the airline, you know, might be.
And that might be a conversation that we need to have regarding expenses, and what you anticipate on spending, and we just want to make sure that we, we make it clear in the contract. If that's being paid from the state versus if that's the responsibility of the contractor, we'll just spell that out.
Yeah, usually, the expenses, I can tell you, other folks, you know, places I've worked in at the state level on positions like this, the expenses are usually, you know, done separately, you know, so that you can figure out. You could, you could obviously, in your budget, put in, I'm just using the number, $10,000, you know, to bring candidates in. And you could put that in, if it comes in lower, then fine, if you have to amend, amend that, then, you know, you'll have to do that. I, I can give you a good idea what, what I think our expenses could be, and I'll put the number where I think at least there's a little wiggle room in there, because always something comes up. Always something comes up.
But, I mean, you should make your best estimate, and then be willing to live with it, and if it includes the stuff that we all want, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's true. Yeah.
So I might recommend, I might recommend that, that we consider just, and I'm sorry, I don't have the contract in front of you, but that we consider capping the expenses at a certain dollar figure, and put that figure age in the contract, so that there's wiggle room underneath that cap, you know, and that can be worked out as we go, but that there's certainty for the state's benefit as to what the, you know, total dollar figure won't exceed.
So that would mean he would, they would sort of come up with a high estimate, not necessarily a realistic estimate to account for unexpected expenditures, right?
Right, well, it is particularly if you're, if you're thinking about candidates' expenses, because I'm, I mean, if you're saying that's going to be part of it, then, because what, what usually happens is, because I don't want to be the, you know, the banker on one of this or anybody, because, you know, if you bring in five or six candidates, you know, yeah, from different places around versus somebody, you know, 50 miles down the road, there's going to be, you know, a different, you know, a different cost, and plus, reimbursing those candidates is a big deal, because if I'm paying them out through, through our firm versus the candidates are going to be reimbursed by the state. See, there's a big difference, because otherwise, I'm carrying, you know, let's just use an example, $15,000 or $10,000, you know, of candidates' expenses, I would obviously want that turned around pretty quick if I'm paying it out of my pocket.
Yeah, well, you're, you have a budget here of $11,000, 925 for your expenses, $30,000 base fee, and it does not include candidate expenses for interviews.
Right.
So I, I think we need you all to make a good estimate of what that total package is, including the candidate expenses.
Or a range. Or a range of candidate expenses.
Well, just, you know, so, if it's, it's $8,000, or $10,000, or $5,000, and make that part of the agreement.
Yeah.
Not to exceed.
Okay.
Is that what you recommend, Heather? I'm trying to...
If the board is looking for a total content value of all inclusive, we can go that way. It's usually not the case that we pay for expenses separately, that we request that the vendor provide the package deal.
Mm-hmm.
There have been exceptions, but it's usually not the case. This is, yeah.
I think, in fairness to the board, that they, they can't be psychic about whether they had five Alaska candidates, you know, not likely, but, so I think if you had a max, Michelle's putting it high to be safe, but it would seem, if the board approves of a candidate to be interviewed, then that person would be expecting expenses, you know, especially if they're national types. I don't think I turned my mileage in for that interview, by the way. Years ago, I forgot about that.
You've got six months to do it.
Yeah. So couldn't there be a, a cap, as John's inferring, and, and then, board by definition is going to...
A range with a cap.
I, yeah, I, I can, you know, I, I can do it a lot of different ways. I mean, I, I can do it based upon the candidate's expenses and put my best guess on there. I'll probably figure out, based upon how many candidates I think you're going to probably interview on my, on my, from my experience standpoint, leave enough there on some unexpected, you know, things that do pop up, and, and so I think what you're saying from a billing standpoint is that we would pay, the candidates would turn their expenses into us, and then we'll pay it, based out of the amount of money that we got in the budget.
And you can have it structured too, that it's, expenses need to be verified. I mean, we can write the language however you want to do it. I mean, if you want to put a cap in there, but then expenses have to be verified. If you'd like me to take back to the office the question of whether it can be done separately, I can do that as well, but...
I, I don't think, I don't think we want to do it separately if we can avoid it, because we don't have a separate payment line item, right?
Yeah, or...
Yeah, no, you, you all have dedicated some resources to make this contract for this process, so we should try to make it inclusive of what it's cost to do it.
And just to talk about number of candidates, so that Gary has this figure. Ordinarily, first-round interviews would be four to seven candidates. Second-round interviews would be two to three candidates. Does that make sense to you all?
Here's what it is.
Sort of, and how many candidates apply?
Works for me.
Yeah, just typically, how many...
Well, for, for the, these types of, you know, jobs, you know, I'm going to say there's probably be 45 to 50 candidates, so it would, you know, would apply. I think from our recruiting, we'll probably get a, a little bit more than that, but I'm just saying that's probably the general range, 45 to 50 candidates, and so, as he's, you know, as, as the chair has said, is that we probably...
President, he's the chair.
President, okay, president, he's the chair.
Don't wish that on anyone. Tell them that it's changed.
Yeah, okay, as a president, okay, as John is saying, okay, is that, we'll probably put them in different stacks, but, but Tim's right. It's probably going to be, you know, five candidates, maybe six in there, depending the first round, then you're going to get down to two to three. You cannot have very many that are going to go public more than two or three, even, I know, I always prefer to get it down to two, because you get it down to three, then, then some of your candidates say, from a mathematical standpoint, am I going to risk this? And that's always a risk.
So the four to seven aren't interviewed in...
What's that?
The four to seven first-round aren't interviewed in public?
Oh, yeah.
They'd have to be.
I thought you said we...
Yeah, they're interviewed, but whether they're going to move forward.
Oh, I see.
I thought there was a way to protect confidentiality of candidates, right? So if we could interview them private...
We can, we can protect it up to a point.
To the point of them being announced as one of the finalists to be interviewed by...
So not the semi-finalists, the finalists.
So the semi-finalists?
No. Right, after, after, up to the point of, we winnowed the field in some way, and they still want to continue, because they're in a pool that's smaller, you know, and we have to decide exactly what that architecture looks like.
So you could interview, say, I'm, I'm saying, let's stretch it a little, six or seven candidates, and then, then you would be able to do that as, as somewhat closer, then you can't do that?
No, no. We have, we have to, we can go through a process where we winnow the field to seven, let's say.
When you say whittle, you don't mean an interview?
No.
Okay.
Where we, based on the, the merits, their application, checking of references and experience that you all do, discussion of the full board, which can be both public and private, for those that want to be kept private. After that process, we say, there's seven, three, four confidential, two public, that we now want to go forward with. We then have to test with the private ones, are you wanting to take the next step? You're now one of the pool of seven.
Okay, well, let me, okay, let me back up, let me back up here to Michelle, if I could answer, you know, her question as far as it goes back to expenses, is that, in those states where I've worked under complete sunshine, you know, and I think we all understand what sunshine law is, is that in some of those places, in order to get good quality candidates, when they whittled it down, they whittled it down to a smaller number, and that number may go, rather than what we were earlier talking to, five to seven, some of those candidates that wanted to use the term private, is that those candidates, that we may only have one round of interview, where you could have maybe three candidates, and that would go public, and then you get it down to one after that. So...
I just mentioned something as context for a minute, having been in a number of these different pools over the years, that if you're, if you're a local soup, and you're going for another local superintendent job, you need a lot of confidentiality.
Yes, you do.
This one, not that they won't require it, but it's something about, a board's not going to hold it against someone because they're going for the state superintendent job, so, and that's often...
Might consider that a badge of honor for them.
I was going to say, the...
They might. I'm not saying there aren't any, as you're saying. I know there's some, but it's a little bit compared to the local, where are you ready to abandon us for another local district? It creates, there will be some of what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I think some, it just depends on their, their particular situation. Some of them may, may look at it as a badge of honor, that I'm going to lose my job, you know, so, you know, I, so I, I just think that, well, we can maybe kind of make that decision as we go along, depending on the, the pool of candidates and, and their particular position that they're in at that time.
Okay, so to be clear, so there would be a semifinal list that would be five to seven, is that what we're saying?
Well, whatever that number's going to be.
I don't know. Well, you have just a few of them.
Yeah.
So keep in mind, how many of you as final candidates are willing, or as semifinalists, whatever you want to call them, are willing to do a public interview for this job?
Right.
And so the number may be diminished.
Right.
You know, once you...
It's just three.
Once you vet the candidates, go through the stacks that John referred to, what Gary's saying, we may end up with three people from your preferred list that are willing to go public in an interview.
And we may have five. Just, it just depends on the, on the folks, but I have a pretty good understanding of how we're going to do the screening, so that helps me build the timeline a little bit. It seems like we're going to have the, the screening, and, and that's fine, we could do that. It's just that, depending on the, who's in that pool, how many are going to want to go forward into a public, and, you know, and, and you're right, you may have a bunch of folks who'll say that's a badge of honor, and you'll have others that, that may not. The board will have to make that decision at that point in time.
So prior to that point, the award could be held, and some of the vetting of the applications as well.
Right. The opportunity to review every...
Right. Oh, yes.
I think, we can only winnow once, and we do it as a whole board.
Okay.
And we can keep people confidential through that process, but we only can, after that, to move ahead, we're going to have to, people have to be willing to be public.
That's exactly right.
So you would sort of vet, at, at least, you would bring us a group of, a larger pool of five to seven, but...
They're bringing everybody. They, they could make recommendations based on their professional judgment. We think these seven, 10 are of real super quality, and we think these 20 are not, and we think these five are crazy. But we have to be able to look at all of them and decide again, no, I like crazy.
Oh, yeah. Crazy's good, sometimes.
They keep it up around here.
Thank you very much.
Crazy's good. Yeah, yeah.
They can't make any decisions on our behalf, and you can't winnow the field, so...
Okay, thank you.
And so, Michelle, going back to your original question too, how many candidates? To a certain extent, that's going to be dependent upon the answer to question number 10 on Gary's...
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's keep moving.
Yeah. Okay, the approval of the advertisement, I'm going to give you a, a list here, and you can take a look at this list, and I'll also try to build as much as I can in the, you know, the contract, as far as what I think we're going to do, and, and when we meet on the sixteenth, I'll identify which ones we're going to be based in my fee, okay?
Are you sure?
Yeah. So that, that, that'll take care of that. And, and, so that'll, that's six, and then seven, I, I'm just going to stay within your, you know, job description. I don't know if there's any special things that you want to add into your job description of whether you want a PhD degree, or if you want, you know, that seven and eight kind of go together, meaning that how open do you want the qualifications for the job? I do have your job description, and I'll certainly, you know, utilize that, but will there be some...
The, the job description speaks to, we, we want to, we're open to Michigan and national candidates, and we very much want someone who has got a track record of improving education, strong education educator experience and credentials. I mean, that seems to be pretty clear in that description, so...
Right.
So that would, I think, color the notion of non-traditional or other candidates.
Wouldn't necessarily exclude people who have had a background in the private sector or military or whatever, if they've had the educational component going along with it.
That's what we would call hybrid.
Yep.
Okay, so I, I've just scratched out the non-tradition and circled a hybrid. Okay, so I've just scratched out the non-tradition and circled a hybrid.
I like the idea of having, reaching out in the National Alliance of Black Children, Black, you know, administrators.
Well, that'll be on my list, that'll be, that'll be in there. And you'll have some others there, but I, when I come back, or when we come back on the sixteenth, we'll, we'll identify that those, those that we've put in there based upon our total amount of dollars that we put in the contract. But I have a pretty good idea which ones you're gonna probably wanna put in there. I'm not a big newspaper person, yeah, I haven't gotten a superintendent ever out of a newspaper.
This Sunday Times had a big ad for the dean of the College of Education at Stanford University.
Yeah, that's usually for the ego of the search firm that's doing that, or the client.
Great advertising for the search firm.
Yeah.
I think it was directed to this university, actually.
Yeah. Well, and the, the only thing I, I have this is because of, this is a state job, usually if it's a local school district, it's a lot easier. I don't know who we sent our, the payments, where does that go, you know, for, like, when we're billing? Does that go to you?
The invoices would be sent to DTMB.
To you?
Our office, or our financial services, yes.
So you'd have a contact name that they.
I just need a, just give me a contact name.
It's in the, it will be in the standard terms, it'll be part of the standard terms. I don't have the name right now.
That's right.
It's financial services, I don't know their address, but it may be in that packet of information that was sent to you.
If I have any problem, I'll be contacting you, so.
What usually happens is, once the contract is issued, a purchase order is then issued as well, and in that purchase order, it has that language.
Yeah, sometimes in my, these large state jobs, and it kinda gets buried of, you know, who it goes, I'm working with everybody here, but.
These folks are very good, and they're good for it, you gotta, you gotta do the job, though.
You can call us anytime.
We'll get, we'll get the job.
Just so, it is a little different, so the state of Michigan through DTMB is contracting to support your services on behalf of the State Board of Education, which is a separate constitutional entity. So you're getting paid by the good administration of this great state to support, who have a big stake in having a really good superintendent, just to help us pick one, so.
Okay, well, we're, worked that out, didn't it? So I, I won't be contacting Marilyn here for a payment.
You can contact me, and I can.
That's how, as long as I got a chain of command, I'm okay, I'm okay. All right, the salary, and this might be something that you may wanna finalize as well on the sixteenth, give you some. That's one of the things that we're going to be looking at, you know, from some direction from your standpoint. Sometimes it's built in, in, actually, the state, you know, in certain states that we've worked at, it's, it's already there. It's percentage of, of somebody's, you know, salary out there.
I could send the current contract of mine through the board, and, and also don't feel inhibited, as I've said to prior boards, which took me up on it and increased the salary and didn't want me to feel bad about it. That's, times change, you know, and there's different, there's different supply and demand points. So we can give you that, but I wouldn't hesitate if you felt that you needed to go beyond that.
Please share this, but also, are there any constraints on what we can offer? It is, it is a complicated dynamic, as I'm sure you appreciate it.
Practically or politically?
Both, I mean, well, practically, that's one question, but as you know, that one of the trade-offs, and Mike suffered from it, is, in this state, local soups are getting paid a lot more than the state superintendent, just as other people are paid more than the governor, you know? So we need to pitch the salary to be competitive, to attract a good person, but also, it probably has to politically stay in that range of what senior leaders in the state are getting paid, which is the trade-off and the unfortunate one for who probably deserve more. So how we pitch this, only MEDC or the hospital systems get paid twice what, you know, the governor does.
Couldn't you combine a couple agents?
Well, one of the things, the way we like to advertise, because we can't use the word competitive, and, and out there, because people call us, and, you know, what does that mean? I don't wanna misrepresent, nor, nor does Tim, as far as trying to recruit somebody, so, and I don't like to use a range from the minimum to the maximum. Everybody wants to be the maximum anyway. And, and not only that, if somebody falls out a thousand dollars outside that range, won't apply, and that might be your best candidate. So I think what we, what we're best at doing is saying, the base salary is in the range of, and put a, a number that we think, we feel is competitive, one that you can live with. And, and then put, plus a, a comprehensive benefit package, your insurance, you know, but they're gonna be looking at salary. But I think if we put the, the line that follows that, that I like to use, is that the final salary will be based on the candidate's experience in meeting, you know, the board criteria here. And, yeah, qualifications, so that way it gives you a little wiggle room, but at the same time, it won't chase away someone that you really maybe want to. You know, so you can adjust that a little bit based on, so you gotta have enough bait on the hook that it's attractive to the candidate. Doesn't mean you're gonna pay that, or, you know, but you may pay that, or maybe a, a hair more than that. I don't like a salary up too, then now you got a cap on it, there's no wiggle room. So I like to use the word, the base salary in the range of, and then, then put that other line that says the final salary will be deter, be, be negotiated with the candidate.
Can I mention the, the variable here that candidates had, will be, see, I think my salary itself, there's probably, out of five hundred, there's probably fifty maybe that have better salaries. What it doesn't show is, is probably another hundred that when you put in things that state workers don't get, deferred income, personal car for personal use, tax sheltered annuities, that's where, I don't know how to get at that, but.
Total compensation.
The total compensation is, but, but I'm actually, but in, to John's point, I mean, the top ones in the state are pretty much MEDC and one other one. And then, but I'm higher than virtually any other director, and I've lost track exactly where that is, that's why we'll just give you the contract. But it's, it's, it's competitive.
Now, tenure has something to do with that in your case, right, Mike?
No, because we've just, I, we have agreed that I would only do what everyone else did in the department. So if there's a freeze, I took a freeze, if it was a one percent. So it's a little bit, but basically, probably it's a little lower than what cost of living would have been ten years ago, just because of the freezes in the state. But I would also say amongst state soups, I think it's very well paid, from what I understand. I mean, I don't know that CCSSO has ever done a formal survey.
I've kinda, I just happen to have some salaries here.
Okay, so that would, that might.
He is three hundred thousand.
Yes.
The poorest state.
They made the decision that the state superintendent would be paid the same amount, no less than the state president of the higher education system.
There you go, that makes sense. When is that deadline? That deadline is when, I'm trying to.
I think we should say that it's an average of the president of Michigan State University.
Yeah, right. No, I, I mean, seriously, it's, it's, I think, we'll see, but I always felt like it was more than competitive for.
The average is around two hundred and thirty-some thousand.
So I guess our advice to you, from a recruiting standpoint.
I'm not saying that's where, I put some low ones in there.
Give us a number that's as high as you can make it practically and politically. That gives us the opportunity to recruit a richer pool of candidates for you.
And John, if I could mention to your point, I think that we're pretty much fixed within, kind of, the line items we're in now, where you have to get unclassified employees, which include me, some of the deputies, it's not, it's a couple. That doesn't mean that can't be, I don't know if that would require, I'm not sure how, but that can be modified by the executive branch at some point. I don't know, I don't think it would be something like a supplemental mid-year. But in general, I mean.
Well, that's a, if we wanted to, could we pitch it higher? I mean, the trade-off, as you know, is, in return for an important cabinet level, you know, role in public service, you're paid well, but not as well as you would be necessarily in a competitive environment.
What I, what I did on this, just so you get an idea, it's hard to find these salaries, because every, every state is a little bit different. They'll have their base salary, and even in some of these state jobs, there are, because they, there's a history of having some kind of deferred compensation, or there's annuities, or they made special allowances, these are just base salaries, you know, and, and those other tax sheltered annuities and deferred compensation. You know, most of these jobs, and I put some really lower ones in here that are probably not the same type of job you have here. I mean, there, there's a few more out there that are part-time jobs, you know, you know, and across the country. And so I did not include those, but there's some one in here. But I think you're gonna see that where you're gonna be at is somewhere, you know, probably in the two fifty to three hundred thousand dollar range, you know, probably where in that. So that's, that's, that's just my, my, and I'm gonna throw it out, I know there's always sticker shock when I say those things. By the way, I don't work on a percentage of the salary, so I don't get anything out of it. I'm just telling you what the market is out there, you know, and that's, that's just the reality of it.
I mean, we'll get to the contract, but I know I'm below the average there, if that's, if that's helpful. And I think, again, in this state, if I were you, I'd do what I, what we've done before, which is pretty much go with state Bennys. So there's no confusion about that. And I would say the one that's fairly common, but maybe there's additions in other states, and there's many other additions at the local level. The one is, you have a 401K that they match, and then depending on how much you pay, they'll match again. But there's no TSAs, there's no deferred income, and I, I mean, the board would should do what they want, but I would almost emphasize the salary and then say state Bennys, because then there's not a feeling that, I don't know, I mean, I wouldn't wanna, I'm speaking for myself, but I wouldn't feel like I have a different deal. My dental should be the same as anyone, I got the same teeth, worse maybe, but I got teeth. So that should be, but the salary, I need to think a little bit more about what our flexibility might be in that line. It's not much, because we recently just with, we gave up a spot, as you know, in order to try to stay within that. That's why the reform officer also became the deputy as Joseph's leaving. So that was necessary with, with, and that's kind of all in that same line item. But here's for sure, what you can do, is, is even though I'm below this, minimally, it can be what we have now. I think for a lot of folks, they'd have to take that into account, obviously. And if you can go higher than that, I'm certainly not suggesting Gary's not right, that part of it is salary. I wouldn't worry at all about what I'm making now, this average, if you needed to make the average, and it's quite a bit higher, then so be it.
And Mike, a vesting for state employee retirement system is?
I think five years to hold your, well, there's no vesting, but to keep your match.
Well, with 401K, do you still have a vesting?
No.
No, it's on the match.
The healthcare isn't even anymore for employees unless there's something different for this.
Jeremy needed, the only reason I remember this, is Jeremy needed another few months to make the five years to get the match held and not have to return it. Do you think that's still accurate?
That's the case.
That's the case, so, but most people, well, that's up to the board, of course, but, you know, hopefully, they would make five years.
Yeah, well, yeah, the benefits and so forth, I just put in a comprehensive benefit, when they, and we, and we could say state benefits, you know, they're, that's, that's, that's fine. They're gonna be looking at that salary, most of those folks that apply for the jobs like this assume that it's, they're, you know, they're, those types of things are controlled by the state, so.
How about length of contract?
What, did you say that again?
Length of contract.
Well, it's, it's basically at will, but we make a three-year, we made a three-year contract.
Okay, all right.
Right.
But it's clear that it could be changed at will.
That's, that's pretty standard there.
Yeah, but I mean, I think they would wanna know, it's, it can be undone on the language, it's three years, somewhat symbolic.
But says, no matter what the contract, he can't be paid for more than six months if he's fired, he or she.
So in effect.
That's in effect.
A non-three-year contract.
So, would you get, will you share the ballpark of what you think this is?
I think it's.
Right now, and, and then we'll figure out what that pitch point is, and whether we can do anything more or not.
And I think the, the issue related to the contract, though, I know from people who've talked to me, that it will be an issue with some folks, you know, obviously. Because in effect, it's a six-month contract, you know, you can call it, you can call it three years. I think it's helpful, and I think it's in good faith, by the way, I don't think the board doesn't take that in good faith. It's just that stuff happens, and so some folks will consider. And one other thing I thought I'd mention is, it's kinda bad luck in a way, because one person who mentioned to me, they were very interested in this job, who I thought would be, I mean, for you to determine, but I would've thought would've been an excellent candidate of ten or seven or something, says, oh, no, I'm going for the MASA job now, because that opened up the job I used to have. So that's at the same time, and you'll have some that'll.
Bill Mays is retired?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So there'll, there'll be some of that, but there's still gonna be, you're gonna have lots of good people looking at this job, and.
Don't put any pressure on us, you know?
Yeah, we gotta get this.
The, you know, the, the trade-off is, return for, as Mike knows, shaping and improving the education system and agenda in Michigan is you sacrifice a bit to be in that role. It's a lot easier to be a, you know, association head, you don't get the opportunity to really make as much of a difference.
Absolutely.
So that's part of the calculation for anybody, and we obviously want someone who's serious about making a big difference and be effective in doing.
Process, we can quote you on that.
Well, and you're right, I mean, I really do look at that as an opportunity.
To give up, he was making more where he was.
But I mean, but John's exactly right, that is the way to think about it. And I didn't mean to, I didn't mention a name, obviously, but I don't mean to demean the person who made that decision. It's because they think they, and can, have an impact on superintendent quality and training. So, you know, it's not like they were looking for an easy way out.
Okay, so what else is on your list?
We're down through item ten.
So, actually, we, we probably do, we need to take some sort of action to enable us to move forward here. So let's go back over, I think the work, if the work program, do we need to include specifics from the work program in a contract? If we do, or if it's even appended to the contract, then I think your work program, you need to modify based on our discussion. And, but we need to approve, I think, a modified work program and budget as a board, if we're gonna help this to proceed now, right? Right, we need, so, I think, looking at the work program, you need to reword number two to, we're going to discuss with the state board our priorities and goals. I would eliminate number seven. We've done our consensus building. I would reword number eleven, per AG recommendation, to say, it's not a candidate screening process, you'll develop and manage a candidate recruitment process, with the, with the note, you're not, you can't appear to be screening on our behalf, or winnowing the field. So you will be, or you could say something, you're, we will be assessing and, and developing assessments to, and recommendations for the board based on candidate qualification.
Yeah, which item there?
Item eleven. So, so again, eliminate all language that says those who emerge successfully from the screening are deemed viable candidates. You, you will be gathering information on candidates, assessing and making recommendations about, to the board about the qualifications, and sharing all candidates with us, something to that effect.
Get this in my contract.
And then, we can't do number thirteen, so that needs to come out. We can't do, and, our, our language is apparently very particular, you can't have anybody interview except us in public, or appear to be interviewing anybody. Number fourteen, they had some concerns with, but I, I think that's fine, meaning you're gonna have some sort of material that help us to gather ranked candidates. And then if there's anything else you need to put in here based on mapping our timeline, what is it? But then on the budget, I mean, did anything that we eliminated reduce the budget? But we also talked about expenses and other things, so I, I think, on, with those modifications to the work program, and with, you're providing a revised budget. to the work program, and with, you're providing a revised budget that factored in, we need, we just need a factor for the candidate expenses for interviews, an item to reflect the $10,000 or whatever, for a total budget expectation, could be 50-some, $50,000, or I don't know what it is, but we need to have that in front of us. But we, I'm trying to get us to a point where we could agree that, under those terms, this work program as revised, with a budget that, could you live with a budget that added in the 10,000, or whatever your estimate is? For candidate expenses, and have that be the budget? Could we approve as a board, and could you, could you live with that framework?
I can live with that framework, I don't have the exact dollars, but I can live with.
Do we need the exact, I mean, I'm looking for an action that is appropriate for the board to take, to approve a work program and budget, or you guys could approve the budget. I'm comfortable with a budget order of magnitude, you all are actually the budget approvers.
Are we speaking specifically in reference to the candidates and their expenses, or are we speaking the budget as a whole?
I think of the budget as a whole, including candidate and their expenses. I'm, I'm looking for a way for us to, I mean, we came into this meeting, I said, we're not trying to nickel and dime the proposal, we're trying to see if, based on changing it, as we did today, it's more or less. And so, I'm basically proposing, let's keep it the same, even though we made some changes, if you can live with that, and let's add in whatever, what's that number for candidate expenses, and if you give it to us now, we could approve the whole thing.
Yeah, well, I think we've got to put in the advertisement, yeah, we got an advertisement, it's not, wasn't in that there.
You've got an estimated advertising of 3,800 in your budget right now.
Yeah, 3,800, but I don't know if we're gonna be adding some of those others.
Right, and you look at just Ed Week alone, it's 3,600, so.
So, yeah, so, to give, see, if you.
Well, we could also do this, if, if, if we're all uncomfortable, and you're not there in terms of what the final deal is, we could try to do it next Tuesday.
Yeah.
We're approving a specific, a specific.
Yeah, that way, she and I will, we will have had some discussion to work through it.
Does that work for everybody? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
The only thing I would add is that we need to come up in this gray sheet, are the other places that need to have listings, and Lupe, for example, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents is $150, and the National, the other one, Indiversity, the National Alliance for Black School Educators, that's another 350. So, I think one of the things that we need to do as a board is just to take a quick look at this, and if there are places that you really feel firmly, we need to advertise, give direction on that, because that will increase the cost by as much as could be $2,000, it looks like.
Well, and also, on the flip.
I think we have to advertise in those places, definitely.
Women in Higher Education is 560, 559, and Dan and Cassandra and Lupe can't see this. So, if we could, I think Tuesday would work for us, but we should, we need to give you feedback by tomorrow, if the board feels strongly that there are certain places we need to advertise. I guess I would also ask you what the point of diminishing return is, in other words, if somebody who wants to look at this superintendent's position is only looking at women in higher education, are they somebody who's going to be sophisticated enough to be our candidate?
No, what the, let me give you just a quick, best, my best practices when it comes to advertising, I don't like to advertise, just spend money to spend money.
Right.
I did want to give you some options here, but the, the ones above, where it says other option advertisement, I would recommend those, because you've got Ed Week and ASA, and depending on ASA, if we, on our timeline, we probably would be, be looking at, you know, 90 days on that one, and then Education Week, I would do it, you know, the three times that we've said. The rest of them are very small amounts of money, and a lot of them are free, and we get pretty good response above that line, where it says other optional advertisement. Below the line, the, the three that I would use would be Career Builder, because that's gonna get you some hybrid candidates, and then I would use NAPSE and Latino. The broad is free, and the women in the higher ed, and those higher ed folks, if they're out looking for this, they're gonna get, they're gonna catch the ones up above, anyway.
That's what I thought.
So, it's sort of like duplicating, you know, once in a while, I get someone to say, well, you know, we, we, we need to be in higher ed, well, I, you know, I don't think that's where you want to spend your money. So, those three with the line above, which, other than ASA and Education Week, those are the more expensive ones, so if you add them all up, it's probably roughly, probably right around $6,000.
So, Dan, we, when the committee was working on this, Kathleen, you and I talked to NASB, did, when, is that a $350 value? Did you get any sense that, that posting there would bring us candidates that we wouldn't get in some other way? Lost Dan.
What's going on?
Are you, is any?
I, I do not have, I don't remember.
I don't remember either, because while she gave us advice on the search, I didn't get the impression that that was a place that potential superintendents would be, would be trolling for information.
Let me just interject, that both NASB and Alice may be more of a symbolic gesture on your part than a practical advantage, because those candidates are gonna be looking at other websites, but they're gonna notice if you don't use those two.
Yeah, if you don't use them, then that may be a message you do not want to deliver, because I think, and, and quite frankly, I have a number of my associates that are founders of both of those organizations, and they will assist getting the word out.
But I think you all, as part of your refreshed proposal and budget, should make your best recommendation of, we think the advertisements and this family of publications are the important ones for you to make, given who you are, who you're looking for.
Gotta give you an idea of the budget I'm on.
Those together, the ones you just mentioned, are about 5,000, so we're certainly safe with six.
Okay, so, so you'll, you'll develop a revised work program and budget, articulation for us to review and hopefully approve at our meeting, that also conforms with what you need, Heather. I just want to make sure, just, is there anything anybody else is eager to make sure we're talking about in terms of the work program? I just want to make sure, number 10, in terms of outreach, and number 12, in terms of really checking people out, are, are things you're all committed to, because both of those are very important, to not just host this and see who comes over the transom, we want some real help in contacting good people out there in the field and saying, hey, we've got this really important job that we need your help filling.
So, on the 16th, there would be a review of the revised work plan, review of the revised budget, we're going to have some more discussion about the profile, and we'll have a draft of an advertisement flyer for your review and feedback, like, you don't need to approve that, just give us feedback, does that make sense?
Yeah, well, that'll be our, whereas Tim and I are speaking for our, our support staff, pretty, pretty freely here on the 16th. We'll, we'll do our best, put our best effort into getting that flyer, you know, wrapped out, okay?
Marilyn, did I miss anything?
That I saw.
Does anybody else have issues, or concerns, or things they want to make sure are attended to? Yeah, Richard, sorry.
This is probably brought up at the beginning of the meeting, which I missed, but I noticed on the timeline, your March dates are all 214 instead of 215.
And they're gonna revise their, they're gonna sort of take our work plan, their work plan, now make one with a target of April, that's making a decision, and what walks us back from all of that?
You're gonna get us caught, schedule conflicts.
Yes.
During the month of March in particular, by tomorrow, Marilyn?
Yeah, if you can email, I'm out of the office tomorrow at a funeral, but if you can email them to me, I can pass them along, if I can have your business cards.
If you don't mind emailing the entire board, and then they can send it back to Jen or something.
Can you also email us the documents that you were looking at today, particularly the advertisements?
Yeah, do you have those electronically you can forward to me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, we'll get them electronically and forward them.
Just call my office and ask for Molly, and she'll.
Molly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you could PDF these things. There was a list of salaries, there was a.
Yeah, all the.
Some of these flyers from other states, and a 10-point issues for us to discuss from their side, so we'll get those, Cassandra.
I want to get this list of, for the advertisements, what is Indiversity, I Am Diversity website?
I Am Diversity.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's another outreach of a minority group that we use, that.
An addition to the, you need it, you didn't say we should do it, I'm just wondering if that would be helpful beyond the.
I think it is, it'll be one of the ones I recommend. It's not very much, so.
March. Sorry.
Thank you, Sarah.
Well, you must not have to get, you got a lot of cards, just throw them.
Tim, you got.
All right, so.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else people have on their agendas, thank everybody, we need to close our meeting and open it up for public participation. Is there any public participation at the State Board of Education meeting? Hearing none, Mike, can you end our meeting?
I would, happy to, we're adjourned.